Thank you.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Thank you. I suppose everyone's read the North Carolina Auditers' Best Get to Rockin' Mountain. This was started in a finding based on that which was founded by the city. I call this special meeting the best members of the responsible citizens of the city. I will be discussing how we as a city can go together. Thank you for being here.
Oh, maybe it's up now, maybe I have to just...
Didn't let me do the mayor. I'm trying to...
Made a harder.
This is uncomfortable for me as is for everyone involved. It's just one of the things. I want to make it clear my focus is clear. Everyone involved, I mean, having a chance to tell their story. There is no secret agenda. There is no targeting of individuals. We're all in together, and at the end of the day, we will still be together trying to grow the city and helping each of its citizens. Overall, the investigative report, without seeing enough details in the conversations with social media and area news reports, showed a deep divide and mistrust among all of us. And as the famous saying goes, a house divided cannot stand. That's why I proposed a contract with Rocky Mount and why I proposed this meeting today. I have two other items that I'd just like to mention. One, I reported that Chris Miller was not planning to attend the meeting last week, and that's not right. Another apology. Second of all, I've had conversations with State Auditor Beth Wood, who is available via Zoom if we have any questions for her relative to the audit, or relative to any other item on the agenda, but anything related to the audit that we would like to ask. So if we can't get her on Zoom, we can certainly call her at her office. This time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask city manager, she would just give us a report about plan of correction that we submitted to the state and go from there.
For, um, let's see, I'll give my place here. For finding number one, which stated from the auditor's office that multiple city officials prevented the Business Services Center from attempting to collect $47,704 in utility bills owed by a city council member. The actions that have taken place since the release have been several. First and foremost, which I've shared with council at least two previous times, that I have established a new department. It's called Business and Collection Services. This was formerly a division under the Finance Department, but it is now a freestanding department that reports directly to me with oversight as well from the internal auditor for the city. This has been in place now for two weeks. I obtained the interim director, Latasha Hall, and the team of us, Latasha, Amy, Paula, and myself, have been discussing the preparation of a RFQ that will go out. We have developed the scope of work for that RFQ, and it's basically just to make sure that our workflow processes, all of our checks and balances, all of our policies regarding collections are in place. So we expect to send that out perhaps sometimes this week. So that's the report that I have for you currently regarding item number one. Item number two dealt with multiple downtown development management failed to follow program guidelines, resulting in $32,452 of uncollected loans and $28,000 of improperly awarded funds. Where we are there is I have hired a new community and business development director that reports directly to an assistant city manager. Oversight for the loan programs are vested in the director and the assistant city manager. The centralization of collection and accountability for all loan collections will include oversight of the Business Services Director, the Finance Director, the internal auditor, and the city manager through monthly compliance reporting. So I do know that both the community and business development director, as well as her staff, and the assistant city manager are now reviewing all of their loan processes to make sure that we are in compliance. Number three, the finding the engineering division's noncompliance with the city's code of ordinance could cost the city $31,000. Well, this is a action whereby the city will amend our code ordinances to specify that the time period for subdivision guarantees may be extended beyond the initial two-year period. Sometimes in a development process, it does require to go beyond the initial two-year period. The city has already put in place enhanced procedures to improve tracking of letters of credit to ensure they are either renewed or called prior to expiration if the improvements have not been completed. Number four, the city manager failed to comply with the city's travel policy, resulting in $1,575 in unallowable travel expenses. Most of the $1,575 was related to dinners purchased by the city manager or the city council and staff at two conferences. The National League of Cities in Charlotte for an amount of $858.62 in November 2017, and the Electric Cities Conference in Asheville in the amount of $557.50 in August 2018. As for the balance, the city manager presented documentation to the finance director that additional meal expenses were required as a reasonable accommodation for a medical condition that had been established and placed in the records of the city's Occupational Health Office in 2018. The city manager believed that she was granted a medical exception because the finance director did not direct her to do anything different. The travel policy will be amended to provide for reimbursement of additional and reasonable travel expenses incurred by an employee on official city business and determined to be necessary as a reasonable accommodation by the city's ADA coordinator. And I do have some additional information that the city staff has been researching and will most likely be amendments to the travel policy, which when presented to me, I will review and offer my comments, and then finally my approval. But here's some of the things that I have also suggested, and they have found is happening in other jurisdictions, that we will use the current GSA, General Services Administration, per diem basis for meals for current year. And we will have a policy to read so that our rates change as the GSA changes. Currently, the city's per diem is $40 per day. GSA is currently $50 per day. We will add $5 a day for incidentals, which will be in accordance with GSA. We will pay 75% of GSA for day of departure and day of return, compared with our current policy of time employees departed and returned home. It's much easier all around. GSA rates will be automatically used depending on town or city employees traveling to. Employees would not need city manager's approval to use GSA rates. We will add a section in the policy for employees with special dietary needs. Any travel being charged to a grant will require preapproval to be charged to the grant and is subject to further restrictions imposed by the grant requirements. Travel expense can be approved at the department head level for subordinates if they have funds available in their budget. We will change the reimbursement forms to reduce some of the paperwork and still be considered an accountable plan. If the council wants something different for council members, a separate policy needs to be written. If they don't have a policy, they fall back on the travel policy that we have in writing. In this case, a per diem rate would apply to the council as well. And we also need to take a look at the pink card and credit card policies to see if they Number five, the city did not designate an American with Disabilities Act coordinator as required by federal law. The city agrees that it should designate at least one employee as an ADA coordinator, and actually, I have appointed two ADA co-coordinators, and I have made their names, office addresses, and telephone numbers available to all interested parties, and it will be so reflected in their job description. The two coordinators or co-coordinators are Mike Bond, who is our property management manager, as well as Artie Jones, who is the director of human relations. So that concludes my update for our responses and our actions to date regarding the investigative report.
Thank you, Madam Manager, for working, for reporting that. The city council has the exclusive authority to manage the affairs of the city and to manage the affairs of each individual. And so I just want to go through the items one through five and see, offer for discussion, if anything addition, if anything needs to be done, or if we feel like we are comfortable where we are. And so, I guess we'll just start with item number one. Sir, any discussion? Yes, sir. We are going through each item on the report, and we have submitted to the state a plan of correction for each one of the activities that the state auditor has indicated. And now we're going back to see if we're satisfied with those responses, or if there's anything else that we feel like the city council needs to address or deal with. And so I acknowledge Councilman Daughtry.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, there's been a lot of rhetoric going around, and orders of rhetoric that's been going around. It includes from State Representative Shelley Willingham and Councilman Knight. And I would like to add to what we have here. According to State Auditor Beth Wood, we as a city council have the right to see the utilities and the write-offs and who they pertain to. And it's been mentioned that we should look at the past 20 or 21 years of write-offs. And I don't know how far back we can go, but I agree with that, wholeheartedly. I think we should do a complete audit of every write-off that we've had for our utilities for as long as we can go back and see if there's any pattern or anything of nature like that. And then I think we also need to probably explore, looking at in detail the, what we require, or not what we require, I guess, I guess what our policy is, policy is for write-offs. And I think the city council should have some say-so in that. So I wholeheartedly agree with Representative Willingham and Councilman Knight as it applies to the audit of the past 20 or 21 years of our write-offs for utilities. And I would hope that my council members, fellow council members would support me in that. And I also would like to have insight and knowledge of what we can do, or what we are, what's required or not required if we have access to seeing who the write-offs are attributed to. So we need to review this policy. Thank you. And I guess I've heard figures as much as $20 and $21 million in write-offs over the past 20 or 21 years, and I would like clarification on that as well.
Is that a motion? It's just an observation. I'm sorry.
How do you make a motion? Make a motion? Make a motion that we go through and complete all of our write-offs for utilities for the past, as far as we can go back, 20 or 21 years, and also review our policy and have additional discussion regarding the write-offs.
Sir, that was a motion. Seconded by Councilman Bullitt. Any need for discussion on that?
Implication, I greatly recited the implication in the media that all of us who've been on council for a while had to have known, and all of this has been considered confidential information. In fact, if you called down there and asked about your own record and you told us, I believe you had to come in and show proof of who you are before they released any information. I have no problem with releasing all of my information that's available.
Councilman Knight, I'm sorry. Councilman Walker.
Appreciate it, Your Honor. Although I understand that Councilman Daughtry is in Councilman Miller's concerns, I don't think we need to take steps backwards in going back over, I think Councilman Daughtry said, as far as we can remember. I think we need to, as we've already done, we have our audit findings, we've made our suggestions for the current audit, and we make sure that we make our corrections moving forward from this point forward. But I'm thinking, I don't think it would be beneficial for the city as a whole if we were to go back, as we're saying, and pull historical documents of as far back as we can.
Yes, sir, Councilman Knight.
Or the city manager or attorney. Also, Miller mentioned about the privacy of one's account holder's information, and we need to be clear if that can, if we can do that legally. Also, we need to be clear, and the citizens of Rocky Mount need to be clear, what is the process of write-offs? Who approves write-off? Because to my knowledge, this council has never approved any write-offs, and to my knowledge, no city managers approve write-offs. And my understanding is that it's the finance director that approve, approve all write-offs. And I also understand that the city of Rocky Mount, we write off at least a million dollars a year, in some years, two million, of industry, private sector, and citizens in this town. And that's probably tens of thousands of names. So we look from 1999 to 2020 or 2019, we have over 21 million, probably more than that, of write-offs. But to my knowledge, and I knew to Councilmember Blackwell, or Miller, or WB Bullough, we never have ever, ever, never seen any write-offs, any names that this council or any other council, to my knowledge, have ever approved. So I would rather, before voting on a motion, that we understand what we can and what we cannot do legally. Because if it's private information such as healthcare records, according to the HIPAA law, we don't want to violate any person's civil rights, human rights, and I hope that we be in accordance with what the law is. Thank you.
Do you have a response for that, Jeff, or is that something?
Yes, sir. Utility records are not public records, but they can be released upon a vote of the council if the council determines that it's necessary to effectively operate the city. Utility records are different from HIPAA records. HIPAA records are not public records either, but they cannot be released. So they're not, they fall in, they fall in a different category, even though they're both not public records. But this would be, I believe, if the city wants to get in there and review the records, would they a proper purpose for review?
Is there any additional discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Councilman Bullitt.
I have comments to make as well. I believe the comments that Councilman Daughtry called rhetoric, interesting that you only select two people who made comments, rhetoric, Senator Horner made very offensive racist comments. That's rhetoric. Calling a sitting elected official a pea-headed fool from a sitting North Carolina state senator. That's rhetoric. I'm also a little dismayed about the tone of all of the discussion. I believe when Councilmember Knight and when Mr. Willingham alleged that they were singled out, it wasn't the fact that write-offs were occurred, it's just that one person was identified as being egregious in the write-offs. So I think that there is a confusion about what the real issue is. A write-off, from my understanding, is an accounting and administrative process that is followed by accounting and administrative personnel in response to whatever the policy states is debt that is able to be collected or moved upon in some form of action. And if the council wants to review the process of write-offs, then I have no issue reviewing the process. But from throughout the auditor's findings and recommendations, and the thing that I've heard expressed from discussions in public sectors, both by the auditor's office and by Willingham and the community of the council, the issue perhaps is that council, or the allegations, or the council were engaged in improper processes, which have not been proven, they were alleged. So the question that I have is, are we moving backwards in giving staff specific direction about individual accounts? Or is our role to set the policy and the system of accountability as it relates to a system of accountability, it's to all of our auditing processes and how we write off debt? So I don't think it's wrong, it's not illegal, and it's not improper to use an accounting tool to clean up debt that's not collectible and have it represented on your balance sheet. That's an accounting standard. That's not something that Rocky Mount does, it's something that everybody does in private business, in nonprofit business, and governmental business. And what I don't see is a need to politicize write-offs and write-off policies and write-off individuals unless someone can prove that individuals use their positions to ensure that write-offs are occurring. And to my knowledge, the findings in the auditor's report cannot substantiate that of any sitting council member or past council member. I do not support showing everybody whose debt is written off. What I also do not support is targeting individuals and creating outrage behind something that is an accounting standard. That's my perspective.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor, seconded. Is there any additional discussion?
I think clarification needs to be, clarification needs to be made. When I, when I say make this, open this up to council, I didn't say to the public, I said to council to review. And I think the implication was, it was implied that the auditor was going through and singling out one individual, and it's my understanding, based off of these accounts, that it was looked at multiple, I would assume every council person, current and past, although we do not know that. So what I, what my intent is, is to clear the air and to see if there are any patterns going on, and not to make this public. But we also, and I agree, we need, we need to know what the policy is, and we need to review that policy. And I think it's even been implied, and I don't necessarily disagree with it, yes, it's an accounting procedure to do write-offs. And you are correct, it's nonprofits, governments, and pro-provident entities. But I do think as the governing body, as the city council, we review property taxes, adjustments, I think we should do the same with this as well as a whole, and we also, if nothing else, just look for, just look for patterns.
Councilman Turner.
Yes, I think the city manager, in the response, did give some guidelines of how we will do things different going forward with the, the utility process. And if we need to hear that again, that we do have a policy now going forward.
Okay, I have a motion for...
I wanted to come in. I do want to mention that recently, we have had information which has been discussed in closed session, somehow being discussed in the media and leaks, and individual names that are called. And I lean over to our attorney, whenever we discuss something in closed session, that's exactly what it's supposed to be. And I think that some of us have violated what we discuss in closed session and have made it public. And it's not within, I would say, how council members are supposed to act in despite under scrutiny of the project.
Okay, a motion on the floor has been seconded. Is there a need to, you call Auditor Wood to weigh in on this, or do we want to vote on this?
Response.
Okay. Well, the attorney said that we could in fact see utility statements.
Somewhat.
Right, and probably the governing board, the governing body can look at utilities. That's...
Well, I think the question wasn't a closed session. The stuff that's discussed in closed session should not be discussed by anybody. It breaks the privilege of confidentiality. If it's discussed outside of a closed session, should not be done.
Things in that vein, and...
Please, let me recognize you. Councilman Knight.
In that vein, I would say to our mayor that's presiding today, that you have violated what we have talked in closed session. And to me, that's another issue that we need to deal with, and we don't need to take it lightly. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, well, that's in the agenda. So I have a motion on the floor, I have a second. It is something that is possible, and so I'll call for a vote, all in favor, please. The restated motion, as I understand it, is that city council go and look back for 20 years to look for emerging patterns and/or write-offs and/or anything that may show a pattern that we need to be looking at as a governing body really for the establishment of policy and procedure. And as it relates to Representative Shelton Willingham and to Councilman Knight, to see if there are others or other items out there that perhaps would suggest either they've been singled out or not. That's our best attempt, that is. Is that what you meant, Councilman Walker?
I would concur with that, yes, sir.
All right. So I have a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye.
Aye.
So Councilman Daughtry voted for it, everybody else opposed, correct?
Correct.
All right. Item number two, is there anything that we need to add or to work through?
Mayor, based on the city manager and, thank you Representative Daughtry, the things that we looked at with the audit, I'd like to move to end the discussion on the audit and adopt the recommendation to all processes and procedures that we have already discussed and published concerning the audit.
Okay. So a motion on the floor to accept the items that have been listed as they are with no new changes. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Walker. All in favor, please say aye. Any discussion? Yes, sir, Councilman Bullock.
What I'm asking is the process that our city manager just read up to us, the, and with, I've asked with the audit. And if you need, again, I would ask mayor if you're able to read those again.
I think, I believe the motion on the floor, as I understand it, is to accept the plan of correction that we have drafted for the audit report that we received, that we have submitted to the auditor's office as written with no further changes and/or comment. Is that a fair restatement? And so is there a second? That's a second by Walker. Is there a need for discussion on that? Additional discussion?
I think the problem is that there are allegations that there was undue influence placed on some employee to cause them to deviate from that policy. Now, putting another policy in place won't change that if there's somebody that quote places undue influence, undue pressure, okay? And it is possible to have an individual councilmember's records released. If they approve, I have absolutely no problem with releasing my utility bills going back to 1986, which is as long as I've lived in city Rocky Mount. And my taxes been paid because I own time before the end of the year because I don't pay interest, okay? And there's a page in the newspaper published every year of anybody whose taxes are delinquent in either county. We are in a dreadful place in our nation, state, and county. There is so much division afoot, and everybody looking for reason to divide us further. If you're a Christian, blessed to be the peacemakers, and we need more peacemakers than few troublemakers. She fits where it.
So I have a comment to that comment.
All right, Councilman Blackwell.
Herein lies the issue with me, is that it's so easy to cast stones when it's not being thrown at what your glass house is built of. And if we want to take movement or make movement towards healing our community, then that's everybody's job, not some people's job. And the allegations that were made specifically about Councilmember Knight and myself, and Rochelle Small Tony, weren't just found in some random audit. They were crafted by organizations and networks broadly, distributed to the public, narratives were created. Ms. Wood's phone number and name were asked to be called and invoked. And then we get a report that substantiates the narrative that had been played out in the public place on internet, social media, WHIG TV, and the newspaper. And to now think that everybody should be able to just suck it up and go home is a false narrative because individuals' characters and organizations have been attacked and smeared. And I'm good with the administrative findings and the response to those recommendations. What I'm not good with is someone coming into our community, creating division by calling people and individuals corrupt behind allegations that cannot be fully substantiated. But that's not my call. But what I take objection to is that this body has always been able to work through division issues. We've always found ways to deal with what we don't agree on and move forward in policy without descending to name-calling, calls for corrective action, and illegitimate concepts that have nothing to do with governing. So my whole point of view is that the auditor has given us her recommendations, we have responded to everything she stated with process and policy. We tried to respond in a manner that was respectful, and then attacks came. So if we want to have peace, let's do right and not just choose a vantage point about the utility bill. Let's make sure in our dialogue and discussions, our definition of ethics goes beyond personal issues related to business or related to how we pay a bill. And let's talk about how we create financial benefit for all citizens in Rocky Mount wherever you live. Let's have a pledge for policies for downtown housing for everyone. Equitable jobs, promotions, regardless of your ethnicity, your background, or your orientation. Making sure people get paid right. Making sure contracts are available to everyone. Making sure we have a city that values all of our citizens on both sides of the tracks and not stealing from one part of town so another part of town can prosper. If you want peace from me, then let's have some justice.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion?
One comment, mayor.
Yes, Councilman Knight.
I would say no justice, no peace. I've been accused and alleged, and I just want to say I have served this community of Rocky Mount without expectation of personal gain my entire life. I have never sought nor received special treatment or privilege. The city of Rocky Mount challenges the findings in the state auditor's report, and I stand with the city. Our auditor asks us for process improvements and recommendation. Process improvements and recommendation. And that's what we have done. As far as I'm concerned, that the audit has been completed and the audit is done. We need to move forward with our economic development, we need to move forward with our housing bond, we need to move forward with our downtown development, we need to move forward with equity, prosperity for all of our employees. So again, I support the city in our recommendation. Thank you.
I have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Is there additional?
Mr. Mayor, I...
Councilman Daughtry?
I'd like to respond, please. We don't have anything written out, but listening, and I think, I think it sounds really good. And we ask for unity, we ask for, for people to treat others correctly and right like we're taught to do. But I have said in this room on multiple occasions, when people come in this room and if they go against certain people, they are attacked. That's not leadership, that's intimidation. I've been intimidated. Why did I run? I ran for city council because I didn't like the tone or what was going on. And I'm not going to sit here and allow people to say that others don't care about people and if you disagree, you don't care about others. If you don't support certain policies, then you don't care about the rest of Rocky Mount. Well, I disagree with that. You can go to YouTube, you can go to various places and see examples of where people have been attacked. So if you truly mean what you say, then live by it, practice it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm responding to that because...
Oh, please. Can we call for a vote?
Yeah, yeah, we can. So what you can do is tune into Facebook Live later on today and get my rebuttal.
No justice, no peace. Call for the question.
All right. Is there, I've got a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Is there, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Councilman Daughtry's opposed. And also WB Bullock, Councilman Bullock. Okay, that being it, that's the last item on my agenda. Is there any other business that we need to discuss in this special session?
I literally hope that moving forward as a city council, that we would show our city how we can work through our differences without blaming, shaming, and killing each other. And that we can hope that they will take our example and unite and really make this city what we know it can be with all the opportunities coming here. And let me just thank everyone as we have processed through this. Hope that we leave here going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Molder.
With regard to voting no on adopting these correct, plan of correction, that is something that the state auditor requested. So for those people that are voting no to that, what is the alternative? What plan do you have to respond to? How do you respond to the state auditor if you're voting no? And I understand that that vote didn't carry the day, but a vote of no says we got to come up with a different response. So what would you advocate that response to be?
Well, we have a motion, it was passed, and the response is as written is what carries the day. So I think we've discussed that particular business, but I appreciate your perspective. Yes, sir, Councilman Walker?
Thank you, mayor. Just to Councilman, Councilman Molder's point, were you speaking to the actual recommendations that we have already given from the city? Or... Yes, the recommendations that the city manager gave out. Okay. So we have responded as the city. I was trying to, to, I guess, get clarity from Councilman Molder.
Excuse me, all I was saying was that there were two votes, as I heard it, not to accept that plan and support that response to the state auditor. So those people who would vote not to do that, there's still a response required. Now, I know that the majority has voted to go forward with that response, and that does carry. All I'm saying is, it's a rhetorical question. For those people voting no, then they would have to, have to be an alternative plan, right? An alternative response.
I don't, I don't think so. No is no, and yea is yea.
All right. That being said, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Do you want it or seconded by Knight, I believe it was? All in favor, say aye.
Can I just say one thing? I don't want to prolong your meeting.
All right, well, let's, go ahead, Councilman Walker.
But I, I just want to kind of piggyback on the sentiments of Councilmen John's responses. I think as elected officials and leaders now of the current day, current status of Rocky Mount, the weight is on our back to move forward in a way that we do not represent anything of the past, that we do not represent anything of a division or any type of divisiveness between the seven of us as a council. I think we set the stage as far as being leaders and elected officials, and we set the stage as to how the city can then be able to move forward. I believe a lot of, a lot of the division has come from the division that's been on the council. And if we can unite as a, as a body and as a governing body, I think the city will, will follow suit, and we'll be able to see that regardless of what we do not believe in together. Because Councilman Daughtry made a point earlier, there may be some things that we all may disagree with. But I think one thing we all can agree with is that if we are to be able to keep in mind that we're in politics not for power, but we're in politics for people, I think we'll be able to move forward in a way that will move our city forward and unite us, as we all seem to, to have the same sentiments of wanting to unite. But we need to determine what does that uniting and what does coming together look like for us? Because I think we're speaking some different languages, and we're not necessarily showing and revealing to the public what unity can look like, because we're not showing it. I think even in our differences, we still as a body have to be united.
Thank you very much. The meeting is now adjourned. Vote, as we vote. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, like aye. All opposed, like aye. Okay. Can I approach him?